I call this regular meeting of the city council open. With that being said, it is 5:50. Please note, everyone is present. We've already done the pledge of allegiance. Chair would entertain a motion to accept the agenda with the addition. There is a request for a license, including tobacco or alcohol, from Farahas Enterprises LLC, doing business as Barajas Mexican Grill. If the council has no problem with that, the chair would entertain a motion to accept the agenda with the addition. So we have a motion by Councilor Bowler.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Any discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries. Next, we will go to the special city council meeting minutes of December 21st. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to the regular city council minutes of December 21st. Chair would entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Kraus. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we go to the payments and claims. We have a transfer to, I'm sorry, yeah, to the 101 general fund from the lodging tax fund of $176.65. Accounts payable, we have regular International Falls claims of $493,060.70. Airport commission claims of $14,939.81. Runway reconstruction project phase three claims of $14,700 even. For a total accounts payable of $522,700.51. Chair would entertain a motion to accept that resolution.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? Questions, concerns? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, under audience, is there anybody in the audience that would like to bring something forward to the city council? All right, well, I have someone in the audience. Oh, hi!
Hi! Sorry for the delay from afar. Congratulations Mayor Droba and welcome, Councilor Holden. I have a quick request that is coming together late, so I apologize for not being able to get it on the agenda formally. And that is regarding use of Smokey Bear Park. So we have had a snow sculptor, a local gentleman who really helped create all those beautiful sculptures during Icebox Days last year, reach out to the chamber with interest in doing that again. And so we're willing to support him on the back end of that and have that under our event insurance and stuff, but wanted to request use of the park for those and then also to request, and if approved, I'll follow up with Ted if the city could pile three snowbanks for him.
First, before we go any farther, Ted, is that something we can pull off in a short timeframe?
Yeah.
Okay. So at this point, we've heard the request. Is that something that the council wants to take up?
What was the date on that?
What is the date on that?
So if, it's really whenever the sculpt, if the snow piles could, I know we've all of a sudden got this weird little kind of warm weather these couple of days, but if those piles could get placed in the park by the end of this week or this weekend, then he would work on them with the goal of having them completed when the traditional Icebox Festival would have been, which would be like by next weekend. And then they would just kind of be there until they sort of melt or fade away.
Okay.
It's late July. I'll root ahead.
[laughing].
Is that the week?
Okay. So at this point, we have a request from the chamber to have public works fill the park with mounds of snow so somebody can sculpt it and to allow use of the park for a sculptor. Chair would entertain a motion if the council is so willing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. We have a second by Councilor Deech. And Tricia, you'll follow up with Ted on the specifics?
I will.
Yeah, I write with crayons sometimes. I have pens, too. All right, so we have a motion and a second. I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
That's cool.
Anybody else have something to bring up under audience? Well, I actually brought someone in today for audience for something we haven't done before, so I prepared this little thing. I just want to read it really quick. "On January 5th, 2015, a new city council was sworn in. Joining Councilor-at-Large Pete Kahler, West Ward City Councilor Cynthia Jaxaw, and Mayor Bob Anderson was myself, as the Center Ward City Councilor and the East Ward Councilor Brian Briggs. But my journey on city council started many years before. While attending Falls High School, I met a reporter for the Daily Journal named Mike Hanks, who inspired me to see the world, learn new things, and enhance my community and not just live in it. And then my military staff Sergeant Dean Whiting from Philly, PA, taught me how to lead a group with honesty, integrity, and to earn your comrades' respect. Don't expect a title to do that for you. Upon moving back to International Falls, I was so fortunate to be inspired by mentors Sheila Johnson, Joe Van Gussi, Dave Stewart, and Larry Bement. These men and women taught me the tools to be successful. They taught me to surround myself with good people, to rely on others and complete a task, but verify that the task is to standard. Today, I am sworn in as the elected mayor of International Falls. Had I not been surrounded by the councils in which I have served, I would never have been up for that task. I recognize Councilors Jaxaw, Kahler, Pearson, Nelson, Kraus, Bowler, Deech, and my predecessor in this seat, Mayor Bob Anderson, for the time committed to our community. But today, right now, I would like to recognize outgoing Councilor Brian Briggs. Brian has been a prominent figure in International Falls municipal government. He has served East Ward, West Ward, at-large councils, including Mayor Pro Tem. He has also served on North Cooch Sanitary District, Airport Commission, the IFEDA, KEDA, and dang near every internal committee the city has to offer. Brian has helped me navigate through city government. He encouraged me to join the VFW, and he has been supportive of decisions even when we've disagreed. Brian has been a colleague, a mentor, and a friend. That is why I asked him to this meeting tonight. I want to showcase the good in our community. Brian embodies everything one could ask for from a civic-minded resident. For the next four years as mayor, I will be awarding a mayor's key to the city to individuals and organizations that are pivotal for the growth and enhancement of International Falls. This is similar to challenge coins that you'd get in the service. Today, I'm so happy to award a man that knows quite a bit about challenge coins, Brian Briggs, the first-ever mayor's key to the city. Brian is receiving this on behalf of all the mentors that we have in our community." Brian, you want to come up?
Thank you for everything you've done for me, for the city, and I greatly appreciate you over the past minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Congrats to you.
Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Your confidence in me and appointment for this role, and it's been an honor and credit to serve this great city. Still want...
Just when you thought you could get away.
Yeah, keep that plaque around.
Yeah.
All right. Thanks again, Brian.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go into our consent agenda. We have three items. The first is the 2021 license renewal, which is Jones Snowplowing LLC, relax-on-rainy massage individual license, approve the IRS mileage reimbursement rate for 2021, which is down 1.5 cents at 56 cents even, and a resolution delegating authority to make electronic transfers to the financial officer and the deputy city administrator. Chair would entertain a motion for the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus.
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any, no discussion? Call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next is the addition to our agenda, which is to request a on-sale liquor license, a restaurant license, a Sunday liquor license, and a idyllic restaurant license for Farahas Enterprises LLC, doing business as Barajas Mexican Grill. Chair would entertain a motion for that renewal.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Deech. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, consider charter recommendation to abolish the Police Civil Service Commission. Is Pete online? I don't believe he is. Well, as you guys can see in your packet, the purpose for seeking the abolishment of the Charter Commission, I'm sorry, not the Charter Commission, the Police Civil Service is outdated for the purpose it was intended to serve. They have nothing to do with the actions of past, this has nothing to do with the actions of past members. They were all fine volunteer citizens that agreed to take on very important jobs. However, police officers are no longer hired off the street and need to be post-certified by the state of Minnesota to hold a position. They also have union protection against unfair labor practices. The Police Civil Service process can be cumbersome when it comes to hiring potential candidates, which can be challenging at times. The hiring procedures could be the same as any other city position in the chain of command as described in the job description and the police, or the department policies, along with disciplined procedures. So at this time, the chair would entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the Charter Commission to abolish the Police Civil Service.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. And again, for this to take place, it does have to be a unanimous motion of the city council. If not, it goes to the voters. With that being said, this was weighed quite a bit. I did have a discussion with the police, must have been early 2020, where we had this discussion, and they had some concerns, but with that being said, it was a good discussion and they were open to doing this. Chief Mastin, do you have anything to add?
No, Mr. I hope, other than, you know, as you said, we've talked about this for quite some time, and I'm in with the Charter Commission on it as well. You know, I have to agree that the Police Civil Service certainly serves a purpose and has served it for a very long time. I believe it may have started back in the 30s.
39, I believe.
Better off as 37. So back then, you know, not to picture God, but back then, it was, things were a little bit different as far as hiring practices and protecting the employee and things of that nature. And so as we progressed forward, officers, like you said, like the pizza, you know, post licenses, they meet certain criteria to become hired. They sense, they've got the post board there, they sense are involved in unions, there's Minnesota State statute that protects police officers and discipline or being discharged. So there's so many different layers of protection for our officers now, but I'm comfortable with a new process. Many, many police departments and sheriff's offices across the state have gone away from the civil service. Our sheriff's department has gone away from it a number, a number of years ago, and it's been an issue. Like you say, the hiring process for the civil service can be cumbersome, and I think that this would be a way to be more efficient, be able to take advantage of potential applicants and trying when they're so few and hard to go. So I support it.
Any questions you have for Chief, or?
I had some questions about it, and I sat down with Pete Kahler today, and when I got done, I was happy with what Pete told me, so I was a little concerned at first, but...
All right. Well, with that being said, if there's no other discussion, the chair would call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, we have a planning commission recommendation on a resolution for a conditional use permit for the application of Holly Bar Posh Relief LLC to allow home occupation massage therapy at 701 Seventh Street in an R2A zoning district. Kelly Myers.
Initially, we met today with the request from Ms. Bar. We hung out all the way up there.
Yeah, because they can't hear on the...
I'm in the top line of the table. So I can even operate. Well, Ms. Bar requested the granting of a conditional use on home occupation due to the restrictions that hit during the COVID times. She could not have, living at home and taking care of the business when they'd been shut down, it was tough to keep her operation going. So what she did is she'd like to transform her home into a home occupation. The board met, and her explanation, she had separate quarters within the facility. We had members that have looked at it. Parking will not be an issue, and this will be a similar temporary type situation. She's still hoping to get in somewhere else. But for the time being, she wants to operate off her home and be able to operate her business there. So the recommendation from the planning commission was to grant the approval.
A unanimous decision from the, yeah. So we have a recommendation for the resolution. The chair would entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Councilor Holden.
I'll second.
We have a second by Councilor Bowler. Any discussion?
Mayor.
Yes.
For the council's information, what we've been trying to do is approve conditional use permits, variances, those types of approvals, and have a resolution of approval that lays out the findings of fact and the recommendation or action of the city council. Because the planning commission just met this afternoon, we don't have that resolution in place, so I would like the motion to reflect adoption of a resolution. I had a conversation with the building inspector and the zoning administrator before the meeting, and we were in agreement that it made sense to make the approval contingent upon and granted just to Holly Bar at this residence so that the conditional use permit doesn't run in perpetuity with the property. It's specifically for Holly Bar, and she did indicate she only wants to do it on a temporary basis. So we're just asking that the motion, or suggesting that the motion on the floor would reflect approval of a resolution, which has yet to be drafted with that, with that one condition.
Okay. So, Councilor Holden, do you accept that as a...
Yeah, I'm approving for approval through the resolution.
Okay. With findings of fact.
Right.
Okay, and a second? All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next is to approve the license for massage therapy for 2021.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Kraus. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilor Deech. Discussion?
Does this mean that it'll be approved for her, whether she's at her home or she finds another spot then?
I do believe that that would be the case.
If she finds another spot, yeah, she didn't have to find a spot, and if she finds another spot, it's still a license for her. Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, call the question.
Aye.
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 And I'll vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, approve the dental insurance group 023772 renewal with no rate increases from the National Insurance Services, effective January 1, 2021, and authorized signatures. Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilor Bowler. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Holden. Any discussion? With no discussion, I'll call the question.
Aye.
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 And I will vote yes. Motion carries, 5-0. Next, presentation on proposed capital improvement plan for 2021 through 2025. This is why I've been rushing through this agenda so fast, is to get to this point. Public Works Director Broca.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So starting last year, we started to put together a five-year capital improvement plan for public works infrastructure. In your packet, you'll see there's a map laid out. Basically, the map's got a few tweaks from what was approved last year. And the reason why I wanted to present this now is we will be ready to go to bid for the 2021 local roads the end of January. So I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that if everybody's comfortable and still heading in that direction, it's all part of the bonding that we did last year. We've got a couple other moving parts. The Highway Lane project, I'm not comfortable presenting that yet. I'm going to present that to the Public Works Committee next week after I get some finalized numbers, but it kind of hinges on our water tank. Bid opening is January 7th, depending on where that comes in to help with the water. There's a lot, a lot of moving parts. The one thing I like about this presentation this year versus last year is we're actually starting to put some names to some projects rather than a dollar amount. But it's all funding dependent, and every year a budget, I know Councilor Kraus at one point had asked, where did the increase come from this year? And I think I raised my hand in the back of the room. We need to put more money into our infrastructure. It's, we're getting down, we're, our 2021 roads were right around 80 blocks again, but after 2021, we start getting into roads that the infrastructure beneath it is in very tough shape. So the idea of doing the mill and overlay or the full-depth three claim like we did this year, we've really got to think long and hard. If we're, if we're doing that mill and overlay and full-depth three claim, you're looking at a 10 to 15-year lifespan. So the roads we've done last year and this year are roads that we're pretty sure we're not going to be able to get to the utilities for at least 15 years. A lot of the other roads, we know that we need immediate fixes sooner. So we were able to get a lot of roads done last year, we're able to get a lot of roads, make them smooth this year. Next year, it's going to shorten up because now all of a sudden, some of these roads are going to, a block of road's going to cost us five times as much, seven times as much as what a block cost us last year. So if anyone's got any questions, concerns, I know it's a lot of information.
I only had one thing that really struck me as odd in the timing, was part of the 2022 local roads resurfacing was the Fifth Avenue West from Randy's to Main Street, and I thought that was the pipe that had burst multiple times last year. I was shocked to see that that did not make it into the 2021 project.
Which is the reason we are going to do Second Avenue East, or Seventh Street and Second Avenue as a MSA project in 2021. The problem is, one block of that segment has a 95 to 100-year-old water line under it that we don't want to put $800,000 into a road project and leave that old water line. The problem is, is if I replace one block of water line, it, the price to just replace one block, Randy's Alley has been on the list for years. What we did was make a, what the engineers felt was a big enough water project that we could afford to be able to get it at a reasonable price. So that's why we're including the Randy's Alley. We added actually the block of Fifth Avenue from that alley out to Third. We've the 12-inch that goes from Fourth Street to Fifth Street on Second Avenue, we made a project out of it.
Right, I see that.
Which, the problem is, I can't, I can't do the water line this year because I can't afford to fix the road. So the alley and the MSA project will replace the water line or replace the road at the same time, so. But that's, hence the reason why I say, is the Seventh Street, Second Avenue MSA project looked like it was, I don't want to say easy, but it was, there wasn't a lot of utilities under it. Well, when we rebuild it, we're doing it for a 25-year lifespan. We've got a 100-year water line underneath that, we've got to replace that, so those prices start going up, so.
I just remembered, last time we had wet water running down the street, that was the conversation.
Yes.
This has to get done next year.
Yes, and hence the reason why it looks like a minefield when you drive down Highway Lane also. So we, you know, I think Mayor Droba seen that we replaced 27 feet of water line on Ninth Street in the last month. How many sleeves were on that chunk of pipe?
Seven, please?
Seven or eight stainless steel sleeves on a four-inch water line that, they're butted right up to each other. They're, it's, we're blowing holes in the side of a four-inch water line that you can almost fit your fist through. But the problem with Ninth Street is it's so expensive. The sewer's bad, the water's bad, and it's concrete, so it's very expensive. So one of the, one of the things is, is trying to get the charter changed so we can see if the council is interested in assuming some debt, because I don't see any way out of it. We can't, with the amount of money that we're generating from our fees, we're not getting anywhere, so.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Ted regarding the projects? I did a, oh, please.
One question, is the Charter Commission, is that in their radar right now to be...
Yep. Well, it was, it was in their, it's been discussed, and they are interested in entertaining it, so I just don't know where it is on their list.
Okay. Any other questions for Commissioner, or Public Works Director Broca? I'm sorry, I forget that you have a new title.
Getting a lot today, huh?
Yeah. So one thing I wanted to tell you is I did an informal, after our last Public Works meeting, about the water tower, and the wording that the vast majority of people wanted is International Falls, Icebox of the Nation, on the water tower.
Same color?
Well, it's blue. It's an ice cube. I mean, that works.
Water.
Yeah, it's water. Yeah. No, that was, that was the overwhelming recommendation, between that and Frostbite Falls and Gateway to Rainy Lake, but I think everyone felt very confident that Icebox of the Nation should be on our, on our water tower.
Okay. And once we get our bids in on the 7th, I think 2 o'clock on the 7th, we'll know more about what we can do with the logo after that.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there any other business to come before the city council? Hearing none, we will go to the reports of the administer, administrator? Administrator, your administration?
Man, now that you're elected, you don't have to think.
It's all new.
I know, should have kept him appointed.
Should have kept him appointed.
I'm speaking to that master.
Something is. Well, Mayor, all I was going to do is, on behalf of the staff, I wanted to echo your comments earlier in commendations towards Brian Briggs. I know that I personally have appreciated his insight, his knowledge, and his willingness to go all out and support the efforts of the city council and the city. And so I appreciate his assistance over the last several months that he's been appointed to this position, but also in his previous terms as an elected official on the council. So I just wanted to thank him on behalf of the staff.
Okay.
I don't have anything else unless the council has questions.
Any questions? Hearing none, we'll go to the city attorney.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the updated Blight report was in your packets. We talked about it a little bit at the meeting last week. Over the next two weeks, almost all of the cases we had pending will be appearing in court, a number of them tomorrow and a number of them next week. The new ones, the dozen or so, 13 that we've just, in the process of initiating, won't have updates yet, but hopefully we'll get some progress over the next two weeks. The hearing's tomorrow and the hearing's next week. Any questions at all?
I have no questions.
That's all I have by way of report. We are extremely busy with criminal cases. After today's cases, next Tuesday, we're now up to 35 cases that'll be in court before Judge Dean, who's a retired judge from Isanti County. And so a week from tomorrow, we're having 35 city cases in one day in an effort to consolidate things so we don't have to bring the out-of-town judges into the process too often. But it's by Zoom. He's not traveling up here for these court appearances, and he was also the judge that we had today. But hopefully making some progress.
Great.
That's all I have.
Great. Any department heads have anything to bring forward? Reports of the mayor, council committees, boards, and commissions. Please.
Just to follow up what Mr. Schmon was saying. As said earlier, mentioned earlier, I met with Mr. Schmon and Mr. Baldwin in Mr. Schmon's office, and very happy the way things are moving along. Now that Mr. Baldwin's back, it seems like things are moving back the way they should be, getting some follow-up. Mr. Schmon, he's got these guys going to court, and that's what we want to see. Thank you very much.
Yep. Any other reports? I did tell you, the council at the last meeting, that I would be following up with the chamber. That meeting is tomorrow for myself and Tricia Hybel, so I'll be meeting with them to be able to work on some of that contract for the city and the chamber. So I did follow up a little bit later than I had anticipated, but we do have a plan. Anything else? Anybody from the audience have anything to bring forward to the council? All right. Hearing none. Then reminder, our next meeting is going to be held on Tuesday, January 19th, due to the Martin Luther King Day holiday. So with that being said, this meeting is adjourned.